In the absence of our secretary, I have asked Nancy Eganberger to take the job on tonight. So could you please call the roll, Commissioner Eganberger?
Aye.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz?
Here.
Commissioner Foster?
Good evening.
Commissioner Janowski?
Here.
Commissioner O'Conne? He is not here. Patrick, did you say something?
Yeah, Commissioner O'Conne noted earlier that he wasn't able to attend this evening, so he had given prior notice.
Commissioner Singh? Running behind.
Maybe, I'll check my email to see if he's...
Commissioner Watkins?
Here.
Commissioner Weber?
Here.
Chairwoman Zuber?
I am here.
And Commissioner Eganberger, I am also here.
Okay, yeah, Commissioner O'Conne's last meeting will be next month, so comment is he's been acting like a short timer already, so anyway. Thank you very much, Commissioner Eganberger. We also have staff present, we have Erin Schluttow and Patrick Sloan, and we have our legal counsel, Ms. Agusa, and I welcome everyone, thank you. Do we have, we had the minutes from October 2nd, did anyone actually review them, or have any comments?
No, no comments.
Move approval, Madam Chair.
All right, we have a motion.
Support.
We have a motion by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Weber to approve the minutes of October 2nd. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent, minutes are approved, and we have an agenda this evening with four, five, let's see, six items on it this evening. Anybody want to move to approve the agenda? Oh, do you have any additions or deletions? Thank you. Patrick, anything to add to the agenda?
No changes this evening.
Okay.
Move to approve the agenda.
Support.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Watkins, I'm sorry, Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Foster, that threw me, sorry, to approve the agenda for this evening. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Patrick, I saw a last late-breaking letter that came in via email. Besides that, is there anything that you want to tell us about?
No, there's been no additional correspondence.
Okay, excellent. And then, sorry, all right, we have one public hearing, one item of old business, two items of new, well, several items of new business, miscellaneous. So the first item is a public hearing, and that is for DeBajah Properties. We're considering a special land use and site plan on parcel number 131-99-0005-701. This property is located at the northwest corner of Michigan Avenue and Beck Road. The proposed use is new construction of a multi-tenant commercial shopping center with one fast food drive-through restaurant. Patrick, could you please tell us more?
Sure, thank you. The site plan itself is up on the screen here, and before going through those details, I'll go through the aerial photo here in the area just to identify the area and the existing land use. So this site is at the northeast corner of Michigan Avenue and Beck Road, and that's where the Target, the Kohl's, the shopping center is, the Crossroads Village Shopping Center. And specifically, it's this site here, which is lawn area on this aerial photo. This aerial photo was taken this year, so it's relatively recent. And this has been an outlot ever since the shopping center was developed. And along Michigan Avenue, there's a really wide buffer along the drain, both along Michigan Avenue and along the east side of Beck Road. That was a drain realignment project that took place when the shopping center was originally developed. So there are no changes to the drain or the drain easement. There is an existing easement for the drain, and there's associated landscaping within that drain easement area. But as we see on the map here, the parcel that includes much of the drain easement is the applicant's parcel. So a large portion of the parcel is already spoken for in terms of the frontage for the drain easement area. And then internally into the site, northeast from the intersection is where the proposed buildings will go. And then around the corner of the intersection, there's a lawn area that's more upland, and the proposed project monument sign is located there. So in black and white on the plan, this is the overall view of the plan. And so as you can see, along the frontage of Beck Road and also along Michigan Avenue, there's proposed drain easement area. And the proposed buildings on the site are multi-tenant commercial shopping center buildings, and they could be anything that would otherwise be permitted in the C2 zoning district, like retail restaurants, et cetera. The purpose of the special land use request is for a drive-through restaurant located on the south side of the southern building, and it's illustrated here on the plans where these rectangles are illustrated as cars for a stacking area. So the proposal is for cars to stack up on the west side of the buildings, go along the west sides, and then the south side of the southern building is the proposed pickup window for the fast food restaurant. The remaining spaces are going to be non-drive-through, non-fast food. If they are fast food, they'll be standard restaurants or takeout restaurants. On the site, there is an area located between the two buildings, and this is a proposed concrete area. On the landscape plan, they show some outdoor dining, so that's something that would have to be refined down the road once the future tenants are known, and at that point, they can make a formal application for any kind of outdoor dining between the tenant spaces. Otherwise, that can be included on the plans at a future date. The access from the site includes terminations from the existing driveways. So there are two terminations to the north and one termination to the east. And I'll put the aerial photo back on the screen here, and I'll zoom in a little bit more. The shadow lines may make this difficult, but as we can see, in the northwest part of the site, there's a driveway termination. Northeast part of the site, there's a driveway termination. And then the southeast part of the site, there's a driveway termination. So those were originally created with the intent that they would serve a future commercial development. So the development pulls in directly from where these termination points take place. So there's no new curb cut onto Michigan Ave or Beck or to the shopping center to the north and east itself. A few areas to address where there are proposed modifications from the zoning ordinance. And when I mention modifications, I don't mention variances. Variances are variances from certain sections of the zoning ordinance where the zoning Board of Appeals have, has jurisdiction. When I discuss modifications, there are certain areas of the zoning ordinance that allow the planning commission to modify the terms based on information provided by the applicant. And two such sections are, first, the number of required parking spaces, and second, the landscape requirements. Those are two areas where the planning commission has some discretion in terms of the minimum parking and certain landscaping requirements. If, looking at the parking calculations, and this is on page three of our staff report, for the drive-through restaurant, based on the proposed floor area allocation, there would be 20 parking spaces required. And for the remainder of the two buildings, for the shopping center use, there would be 44 parking spaces required. So there would be a total of 64 parking spaces required on this site if we calculated both the shopping center standards and the drive-through restaurant standards separately. If we were to calculate both buildings under the general shopping center standard of one space per 250 square feet, then the ordinance would state that there are 56 parking spaces required. So it's estimated 64 spaces required based on the proposed allocation and the drive-through restaurant component. There are 55 parking spaces proposed, which is nine less than required for both uses, and one less than required for a shopping center use only. Section 4.01(c)(6) of the ordinance allows the planning commission to approve a modification to the minimum number of parking spaces. In this case, we recommend reducing the number of parking spaces to 55 proposed because there are many shopping centers in Canton with attached drive-through restaurants that don't approach their parking lot capacity even on their busiest days. In some cases, a freestanding drive-through restaurant may demand more based on its use, but what we've seen in terms of fast food restaurants attached to buildings, they're relatively limited in size and seating capacity, so a lot of that traffic goes through the drive-through, and there's not as much sit-down traffic. In this case, if the parking demand were to exceed 55 spaces on the site, there could be a shared parking agreement between the applicant and the owner of the property to the north and east. Those remaining parking areas to the north and east, they're seldom parked in, and they would be great areas for shared parking or possibly some future redevelopment if the opportunity arises. So based on those requirements, we recommend that the 55 proposed parking spaces be approved. The other item that we wanted to note was for the landscaping. The frontage landscaping was planted when the shopping center was built, and the owner proposes to update the landscape plan by replacing 40 of the frontage trees. So a lot of the tree removals, they'll be replaced, one for one, not based on tree removal standards, but based on the standards of the previously approved site plan. The applicant proposes to relocate all the required ornamental foundation trees and some of the required foundation shrubs outside of the building foundation areas due to the adjacent sidewalk and drive-through areas around the building, which include the wider sidewalk areas on the east side of the building, which might be used for outdoor dining in the future. The planning commission is permitted to make certain modifications from the landscape standards pursuant to section 5.07 of the zoning ordinance, provided those adjustments are in keeping with the intent of the ordinance. And in this case, when we zoom in on the buildings themselves, it's surrounded mostly by a concrete sidewalk, which, some of which may be repurposed for outdoor dining depending on the user and the standards. The zoning ordinance requires a series of ornamental trees and shrubs to be against the foundation of any foundation that faces a public road or a parking area. So in this case, there's not room for both a wider sidewalk and foundation landscaping. So what the applicant is proposing is to still plant many of the shrubs, although not all the foundation shrubs, and to relocate the balance of the required shrubs as well as the ornamental trees, mostly along the frontage of Michigan Ave and Beck Road. So those are trees and shrubs that will still be on the site, will still be visible. They'll just be relocated away from the foundations and located elsewhere on the site. Finally, regarding the special land use review standards, to approve a special land use, all standards of section 27.03(c) of the zoning ordinance must be met. And in reviewing the standards, staff recommends that the special land use be approved based on staff's findings that the standards of section 27.03(c) of the zoning ordinance have been met. So with that, staff's recommendation is approval of the special land use and the site plan for the multi-tenant commercial shopping center with the attached fast food drive-through restaurant, including approval of the landscape modification pursuant to section 5.07 of the ordinance for relocating the required foundation trees and shrubs, as illustrated on the plan, and approval of the proposed 55 parking spaces pursuant to section 4.01(c)(6) of the ordinance as this request meets the special land use and site plan criteria of the zoning ordinance. And we recommend this based on the information and plans provided and subject to all state, county, and township requirements, including one requirement of modifying the menu board in accordance with the ordinance to meet the requirements, and that's a 24-square-foot menu board that's allowed maximum. So that concludes staff's comments, and we'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Patrick. So this is a public hearing.
Madam Chairman, I move to open the public hearing.
Support.
Great, we have a motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Foster to open the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, public hearing is open. Is the project sponsor here? Would you like to add anything to what Patrick said?
My name is Gassar Abdnou from GAV and Associates. I'm the architect on the project.
Okay.
The owner's here with us, and the civil engineer, Mike Priest, is with us here tonight. First, we want to say thank you for the planning department that have been helping us all the way from the beginning to come up with this plan. The owner had this plan for a while, and now is the good time to maybe build it and make the area look better, at the same time, good for the township. And the way we worked with the township, we made sure that all the requirement is met. We worked with the landscaping a little bit, we worked with some, not variances. For the parking, usually, we ask for 55, but you know, it's a big parking around it, so people can park everywhere. And we thought that having the courtyard area between the two buildings, instead of having one full building over there, it makes better, it's more inviting to the people, to the building, and give it more ability to put chairs and tables and people to be outside, especially if you have like ice creams or restaurants around, and make it easy for the community to be around. And with the building, we're meeting with all the requirements for the materials we're using outside. I do have a copy, if you'd like to see it. I have little rendering, it's not fully done, but I can show it to you if you like to. And we have more than 70, 80% of brick in this building, and we're using metal buildings on the top to show. So I think, in general, it's a nice building, it's attractive, and we're here to answer any questions you have, if you have any question.
Very good, thank you. I'm going to start with the commission. Oh, I'm sorry, does anybody from the public have anything to say about this project or any questions?
I move to close the public hearing, Madam Chairman.
Support.
Great, we have a motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Foster to close the public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, public hearing is closed. I am going to go to the board. I'm going to start with Commissioner Watkins.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Yes, I'd be more than happy to see any CDs or DDs that you have, Patrick, I don't know if they came your way already, but I think it would be great to share with the commission. We could see some of the design or the concept documents. I do have an additional question. That corner, Michigan and Beck, yeah, it's an interesting space. So you can only enter the center from, what is it, from the north and the south via the curb cut on the east side of Beck, and then you can enter it from heading west, turning in north. I just, I want to be sure that we've addressed any issues with there not being, I thought I heard there's not going to be an additional curb cut. With southbound traffic coming from Beck to turn left into the center, because the only curb cut's going to be at Target, I've been there before, it's, I mean, it's okay, but now we're adding a little bit more density to the site. I want to be sure that we're fine without a curb cut to get to this second phase, or should I call it the last phase of this particular shopping center. And then the last question's going to be, oh, great, thank you so much. I'm looking at, yeah, it's, yeah, I'll leave it right there, there's, you've only got the curb cut coming into Target. I just want to be sure that that's going to be enough. I'm going to defer to some of the civil engineers and other engineers on the board, but I really would like to be able to get a better understanding of how we manage traffic coming southbound, okay? Thank you so much.
I mean, southbound on Beck? Is that what you mean? Okay, excellent, thank you. All right, we'll get to our engineer in a moment. So Commissioner Eganberger, do you have any questions or thoughts?
No, I don't think I have the concerns you do, Brian, about the needing extra curb cuts, because if you look down on Beck or on Michigan Avenue, there's two entrances to get in there. One's a little further down, but you can see there's two ways that you can kind of get into that parking area.
There's a third one even, down at the far end, yeah.
Right, yeah, yeah, that gets you kind of into that whole area. So I don't think I'd like to see another curb cut into there. I think that'd be just too much. And it does have an extra, I know there's a specific name for it, Patrick, where you can go to the, to slow down.
Acceleration lane?
Yeah.
Yeah, and if we look at, for example, on Michigan Avenue, this, well, it's often used as a D cell lane, it's got a stripe, it's got striping along it, and we've had cases along Michigan Avenue before where that existing concrete has been converted to a turn lane where it's just been some repainting to turn right. And it's, Michigan Avenue is under the jurisdiction of MDOT, so if there's an MDOT warrant to do that, they can.
So I didn't have, I thought the picture was nice, I don't have any concerns.
I think we have four entrances to the site, and I think if you go and drive it, it's very, very much enough for the site. It's a big parking, and the building we're doing is a very minimum size relating to where the shopping center is. We don't think that it's a big issue, and if you add curb cut, it's going to be very close to the intersection. I think the engineering won't like it, and MDOT won't let us do it, so anyway.
I agree, yeah. Commissioner Weber?
I tend to agree with Commissioner Eganberger and what the architect just said. I understand Commissioner Watkins' concern about the traffic flow up there, but I really wouldn't want to see another curb cut closer to Michigan Avenue. Cars come off of Michigan Avenue, turn onto Beck pretty quick. I just would rather not see another opportunity for traffic to slow down there. So other than that, I like the proposal, I like the plan.
Thank you. Commissioner Foster?
I don't really have any additional comments. I mean, I will say that I do agree with Commissioner Weber and Commissioner Eganberger about the curb cut, but no additional comments or questions.
Thank you. And our resident PE, Commissioner Cruz, what's your thought?
Can you give us a quick?
Yeah, could you please list your qualifications to have an opinion on traffic?
Is this before us for site plan approval, or?
Both, special land use and site plan.
Okay. So we don't get another chance to see this plan again, if it's approved, is that right?
That's correct. Not unless there was a major revision or if there was a remand from the township board.
Okay. No, I'm in agreement that less curb cuts is better. You have multiple ways in the site and out. Even, I mean, you couldn't put one on Michigan Avenue, MDOT wouldn't let you because of the proximity of these other approaches. And to do one on Beck, you'd have to cross that drain, that's a major permit, but I think this site has adequate access. And I believe, I mean, this is probably master planned in the entire development. What was shown here when Target was developed in this specific piece?
I don't recall if there was a single building or two buildings, or whether that had a drive-through, but there was something penciled in as a future development connecting to the existing driveways within the site.
Do we have any idea what tenants, prospective tenants, right now?
Actually, we have, we know we have Dairy Queen in the corner for the drive-through, and...
Could you say that again, sir?
Dairy Queen.
Dairy Queen on the corner.
Maybe there's a, some retail and maybe one restaurant or two, but regular, there's no drive-throughs or anything, they're just...
So the Dairy Queen's the drive-through, or just a walk-in?
The Dairy Queen is the drive-through. There's no sign then, but they're talking to us for Dairy Queen on the corner.
So this plan has one drive-through only?
Yes, only one.
Okay, correct. Can we go to... This is a one-way around the building?
That's right, yes.
So I think you're going to need some, like, let's say someone's coming in from the east, you're going to need some "do not enter" signs so that they know not to go this way.
Absolutely, yeah, we'll be having signage, yes.
That's why I was asking if this was final site plan, because there's no signage shown here.
And we made it wide enough for the fire trucks and everybody, according to the fire marshals.
So "do not enter" signs there, and then when you come in the site, you're going to want to know where the drive-through is. Otherwise, you're going through the parking lot, and you're trying to figure it out. So I think it would help if you had arrow drive-through signs, similar to, has anyone been to Tim Hortons by Meyer? I mean, you've got a Wendy's and Tim Hortons, it's so confusing. You're going to want to know where that drive-through is immediately.
Absolutely right, we're going to be showing the signage.
So maybe at the entrances, direct people where that drive-through, so they're not clogging up the parking lot. Do you have joint access agreements with the shopping center to use?
That's right, that's right.
Are you proposing any bike park, bike racks, just a single bike parking? I think it's important for this, since you have outdoor seating here.
Planning the parking...
You can do like one bike hoop. I think it's good for your business, too, you know.
That's something we can help with.
Open to that?
We are open for this. We do it in the shopping centers.
So right now, you know, you got out of, the problem is, this development didn't have sidewalks master planned in it, so I see the challenge, you know, of crossing the drain, so I think you can at least put a bike rack in there.
Don't have any issues with that.
The last thing I have is an engineering thing, is the engineer here?
Yeah.
The benchmarks. The township and the county use NAVD-88, not this NGVD. It's a simple conversion, and the reason why it's important is because all our maps are based on this datum, and the county's drains are based on that datum, so we want everything in the same datum. An issue?
Please introduce...
Sorry, I left it on the same datum as the surrounding development was on, in case anyone was comparing elevations on this proposal to, that was designed for the crossroads center, it was all apples and apples. But you're right, current floodplain elevations are going to be compared to NAVD-88. It's not an issue.
Please use your mic.
The very last thing is the mix design for your asphalt, those are the old MDOT mixes, the 1100. We use the 5E and 4Es, same cost, it's a tighter mix, you know, you can consider that, hopefully. I think it's a tighter design, it's a better mix. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to add something real quick, Doug, about the traffic?
Yeah.
I mean, well, I guess let's go to Commissioner Janowski first, and then I'll come back to you. Use your mic.
Like the development overall, the aesthetics look good. I don't have any concerns with it. I do have a concern, subjective, so your center courtyard area is 17 feet. Where it runs west, or it runs west to east, I don't know how much sun's going to get in there and how much light or how that, I've seen a lot of times it's not a courtyard, but that pass-through may become a free-carrying space if you don't have restaurant tenants around there, it just becomes undesirable. And I don't know how the sun, I don't know if you've studied the sun, and 17 feet wide for what you're trying to fit in there, looks a little tight, but...
Please use the mic, sir, I'm sorry, because we're recording this, so...
Yeah, yeah, we're planning to put windows on either side of the courtyard, so actually you're going to have a lot of lights from the stores itself, and hopefully, we're going to have maybe some, maybe lighting on that, so that's going to be... to have maybe some, maybe lighting on that, so that's going to be actually a little bit more, I'm not sure exactly about the sun, it depends what direction you're going, but maybe in the morning, or night, so, but, you're right, it's not a wide, it's not 25 feet, but we decided to give something for access, for people walkable area, and to be able to put some, maybe tables and chairs in the future. And we're going to come back and show some plans, as Patrick said.
Is that dimensional?
Dimensional, yeah.
Because you only got so much of this.
That's right, yes. That's right, too.
Commissioner Weber, you had, you mentioned something about the circulation on the property.
Well, just as an example, how Commissioner Cruz brought up the traffic flow, if this is, if the drive-through ends up being a Dairy Queen. And I know you mentioned the Tim Hortons on Ford Road, that, how confusing that can be. I thought of the Dairy Queen that's over on Canton Center, and the drive-through, and the traffic flow that's at that development, at Canton Center and Cherry Hill. And that one is rather confusing, if you're not familiar with the site. It goes behind the building, the signage, I don't think is very good. So I would, I would make, I'd want to make sure that if that's indeed the tenant you have, or even if it's another drive-through restaurant, that you have the traffic flow clearly marked in this parking area to, to make sure that there's not a traffic issue. It's...
Absolutely. Actually, that's why we kept it with one-way traffic, because if you do two-way traffic, it becomes way more confusion. But we wanted to be one-way traffic to go around the building, so people can really, it makes it easy and less congested, because we have space to do two-way, but we decided not to, because it's not going to help. We made sure that it's big enough for the fire trucks, make sure that to maneuver around the building. And also, like, we have 22 feet, so if one of the people's stacking on lane, and he wants to go out, so we made it easy for everybody to kind of work in that.
I, I'm definitely a proponent of the one-way access, I don't, I don't, I agree...
It works easier for everybody.
I would agree with that, yes. Thank you.
Of course, and I agree with the comments about the, the traffic and the curb cuts. I don't think we need any more curb cuts. I think this will be a very nice development, thank you.
Can I?
Of course.
Ask, I just noticed something. Can we go to page three? So, on the west side, can you zoom in? It shows 94-foot easement. Up north, 94-foot easement for signs drain, so that's a county easement. I'm not sure they're going to let you plant, any plantings in their easement. I'm all for it, if you plant on the top bank, but you're going to need Wayne County's approval to plant in their easement. And, and Patrick said your foundation plantings can't be done, so you're going to put more there, and your landscape plan shows that. It's something to consider, make you rip it out.
Yeah, Patrick, if you go to the landscape plan, we did show some planting in front of the building, but we didn't do them as a foundation.
Planting in the signs drain, and the county may not allow that. Patrick, can you go to the landscape plan?
Might be right, we'll, I suppose, have to cross that bridge. I would be hopeful that they wouldn't object to it. I see some of those are inside the floodplain, but they could be easily moved outside.
Yeah.
So I think a case could be made to them, if they wanted to object to that, that much of that planning is already there, and was on the original landscape plan for the shopping center, and was approved in, in those locations where you can see the lighter ones. So I would hope they wouldn't object to the ones being similarly located relative to the channel and everything, and the top of the bank.
Doesn't inhibit flow, just, just a word of caution.
Be outside the 100-year floodplain, I don't know why they would object to it unless they had issues with access, but I don't think that they do, so, hopefully they won't object to that.
Have you ever done a project in Wayne County?
I did that drain relocation.
Okay.
And yes, many other projects in Wayne County, and I understand they can be somewhat unpredictable in their tenants.
But I like the design, I mean, it's, it's great, if they allow it, then I'm all for it.
We've seen Mr. Priest many times here.
Madam Chair, if we could, for the record, if the gentleman at the microphone could introduce himself, give his company.
Oh, I think he did, very quietly, but yes, please, yes.
I'm sorry, Evan Priest.
Evan Priest, yes. Anything else from anybody up here? Do, do I hear a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion.
Awesome.
I move to recommend, excuse me, I move to recommend approval of the special land use and site plan for a multi-tenant commercial shopping center with an attached fast-food drive-through restaurant use on parcel 131-990005701, at the northeast corner of Michigan Avenue, at, the northeast corner of Michigan Avenue and Beck Road, including approval of a landscape modification pursuant to Section 5.07 of the zoning ordinance for relocating the required foundation trees and shrubs, as illustrated on the plans and approval of the proposed 55 parking spaces pursuant, pursuant to Section 4.01(c6) of the zoning ordinance, as the request meets the special land use and site plan criteria of the Canton Township zoning ordinance, based on the information and plans provided, subject to all state, county, and township requirements, including modifying the menu board site in accordance with Article 6A.
Excellent. Do I hear a support?
Support.
Awesome, we have a motion by Commissioner Weber, and support by Commissioner Janowski. Any further discussion?
Real quick, Madam Chair, what's the timeline on the project developer?
Whenever we get started, whenever we get the approval, we're going to start construction documents submitted to the city, and go ahead and start working on it.
Is there a target completion date?
I mean, it's going to take for design, and some meeting, maybe another three months, and after, I mean, maybe March, we start, it's going to take like, six to seven months.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, Commissioner Egenberger, could you please call the vote? Sure. Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger, yes. Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Janowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
And Chairman, Chairwoman Zuber?
Yes. Very good. Patrick, what are the next steps for this project?
Sure, the next steps will be for any kind of plan modifications to take place that are required, such as the menu board, and some of the items that we had discussed this evening. And then, the plans will go on the next available township board agenda. I don't have the calendar in front of me, but it may be the last meeting at the end of this month, or in early December, where the special land use and site plan would go to the Board of Trustees for final consideration.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you for your help. Thank you, we appreciate everything, thank you.
And don't forget your rendering. And next item is some old business, we've got Raising Cane's. We are considering a special land use and site plan on parcel number 040-99-0001-703, also known as 44250 Ford Road. The property is located on the north side of Ford Road, between Sheldon and Morton-Taylor Roads. The proposed use is for a fast-food drive-through restaurant, and we've already heard a lot about this, Patrick, so can you, can you give us the highlights of what's been updated?
Sure, thank you. At the last meeting in October, the Planning Commission reviewed the revised plans, and this was at the October 2nd meeting, and the item was tabled and deferred to this month, pending revised plans. And specifically, the revised plans were to make the southwest corner of the site, this is the drive coming in from Ford Road, to make that one-way, and to have one-way circulation going counterclockwise throughout this part, this part of the site. So the southern drive would be going in a counterclockwise movement eastward. So this drive was narrowed, and created as a one-way. The four parking spaces on the south side were angled accordingly, so the number of parking spaces are the same. And there is some widening in the southeast corner, so that a fire truck can make the turning movement. We're still coordinating with the Fire Department on the precise movements, but where we are with that is, if a wider movement is needed for a fire truck to make this turn, it's possible that some area could be taken off of the island here, southeast of the restaurant, or there is room to expand the curb in the southeast portion. The design here is based on the last-known MDOT design available to the applicant for the boulevard, and this is one of these large turning looms that MDOT had originally designed. We don't have the final designs back from MDOT yet, but it's possible that this loom may actually be smaller, and if it is, there's going to be more room available for a wider turning radius. But the bottom line is, we can get a wider turning radius if we need to, once we have the final designs from the applicant with MDOT, and the Fire Department has reviewed it, to make sure that it meets that. So there's room to make those corrections, if we need to. The last thing that I'll mention is that there's been associated signage added to the plan, showing the one-way, the "do not enter," so there's an abundance of signage there to direct drivers to make the correct turning movements through the site. So that concludes our staff report, and a summary of some of the changes since the October 2nd Planning Commission meeting. And our recommendation is approval with conditions, with a model motion included at the end of the staff report.
Very good, thank you very much. Is the project sponsor here? Do you have anything to add to what, what Patrick already told us? Okay, excellent, very good. I'm going to start at the other end of the dais this time. Commissioner Janowski, do you have any comments?
No comments.
Okay, Commissioner Cruz?
The plan looks, looks great, I think it's a, a big improvement from the last iteration. Can you, I just noticed something on... 7.0, something very minor. Northwest corner of the... Can you move a little that way? That storm structure, at the very, the northernmost storm structure? That is in that water main easement, I think you can just move it over a little, north is to the left, is that right? Just to make the 10-foot separation, get it out of the easement, in case the water main needs to get serviced. That's all I got.
I would take that as a compliment.
Take that and run with that tonight.
Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner Cruz. Commissioner Foster?
I'm good with the changes that have made, no comments, thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Weber?
I'm good with the changes, I appreciate you working with us to change the traffic flow, and hopefully to make this a successful addition to Ford Road.
You're here. Commissioner Egenberger?
Yes, thank you, I had a couple of questions. Patrick, if you could just help me understand, the bottom left, where it says "do not enter," and I would think we don't want anyone to enter or leave right there, what, what is that?
This drive here?
Yeah.
Sure, that's, so if someone is stacked up to go through the drive-through lane, and there, once they enter the drive-through here, they're, they're committed, and if for some reason, they took a wrong turn, or changed their mind, this is kind of an outlet for them to, to get out.
Kind of an escape route.
The kids are screaming, yeah.
Gotcha, okay, yeah, I've been there, yeah.
Right.
Okay. Gotcha.
It's 2:00 in the morning.
And then, on page 148, which I know is not 148 for everyone else, but on our packet, it seems as though there's just an old drawing. It was on 148, I think it showed the old traffic pattern, you guys are nodding like, yes, you know what I'm talking about?
Right, yeah, this was from their traffic impact study, and when they did the traffic impact study, they included the layout as an exhibit.
Yeah.
So I think it was based on the, the previous layout.
Gotcha.
The access points, I think, are mostly the same, with the exception of the internal point that's been changed to one-way.
Yeah, and I like, I like the traffic change. And, and I will say, my daughter lives in, outside of Chicago, so we were there, we went to the Raising Cane's store, husband's a big fan, my grandson's a big fan, in fact, you know, I told them, "We're talking about it again tonight," so they were like, "Oh, let's hope it comes," so. Already got some customers.
There's a lot of customers, already, so, anyway.
My kids have already...
We're getting pressure. Commiss...
I got a cough.
Were you pressing your button when you said that? That was funny. He said he got a cough from, from Commissioner Weber's kids, too. So, anyway, okay, Commissioner Watkins?
Super quick, so, kudos to you guys on the, on the improvements to the traffic flow. My, my comments are development-related, just quickly, the development timeline, I'm sure there's, there's some demo that needs to be done on the site, so, yeah, talk to us about what the development timeline looks like, and when we open it here.
To the, the microphone. That's right, you have a good memory, I have my memory.
I overshared. My name's Crystal Farrell, I'm with Raising Cane's. Our timeline, depending on we get, when we get our permits issued, we could start as early as the summer, and possibly have it open before the end of the year.
Excellent.
I'm sorry, next summer. You know what I meant.
Yeah, well, summer's gone here.
2024, yeah, the end of 2024.
Excellent.
Does that answer your question? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Commissioner, anything else? All right, does anybody want to make a motion? Raise your hand? Was it?
I'll read the motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, awesome.
I move to recommend approval of the special land use and site plan for a fast-food drive-through restaurant, use on parcel number 040-TAC99-TAC0001-703 at 44250 Ford Road, including the proposed 33 parking spaces pursuant to Section 4.01(c6) of the zoning ordinance, as the request meets the special land use and site plan criteria of the Canton Township zoning ordinance pursuant to the information and plans provided, subject to all state, county, and township requirements, including Fire Department approval of the drive aisle width.
Excellent, do we have support?
Support.
All right, we have Commissioner Watkins making a motion, and support by Commissioner Weber. Any further discussion? Great, Commissioner Egenberger, could you please call the roll?
Sure.
The vote.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger, yes. Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Janowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Chairwoman Zuber?
Yes.
Very good, motion carries. Patrick, next steps?
Next steps will be for the application to proceed to the Township Board of Trustees for final act... for final action on both special land use and the site plan.
Excellent, thank you. Good luck. Yeah. All right. And our next item of business is new business, and we have Discount Tire on Michigan Ave. We're considering site plan approval for parcel number 131-0002-0001-000. Lots of zeros there. And their address, also known as 5008 Research Drive. The property is located on the south side of Michigan Avenue between Beck Road and Belleville Road. The proposed use is an automobile service station. Patrick, please enlighten us.
Thank you. This comes back to the Planning Commission from earlier this year. At its meeting on May 1st, the Planning Commission held a public hearing and recommended approval of the special land use for the automobile service station. And on May 23rd of 2023, the Township Board of Trustees approved the special land use application. So now that the special land use has been approved, the applicant has returned to the Township for a site plan review. The layout of the plan is mostly the same as it was during the special land use review back in May. There have been some changes in terms of refining it. Sometimes if special land use and site plan don't go together, sometimes there are fewer details on a special land use plan or additional things to clean up on a, from a special land use plan to a site plan. One item that I wanted to note for this plan where it's been kind of a significant change from the special land use plan is that on the previous special land use plan, the west side of the property was proposed to remain undisturbed and with the vegetation still there. I'll bring up an aerial photo of the site just to illustrate that. So this is the parcel here, 5008. This is the southwest corner of Michigan Avenue and Research Drive. And actually, if we go a little bit farther northwest, this is the property at the northeast corner of Michigan and back, just to get our bearings here. So this isn't far away.
Isn't there a car wash going in near here somewhere? Just for the record?
Yeah, yeah, that's a...
Some storage facility.
Yeah, yeah, we can, so, storage facility here across Research Drive, and a car wash under construction at the southwest corner of Michigan and back.
I'm impressed these photos are incredibly recent.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah. I don't know if it's an aerial photo or a satellite photo. So yeah, that underscores the point of a lot of development demand in the area, a lot of redevelopment demand, so a lot going on in Michigan Avenue. And on this western part of the site where it's heavily wooded, there are floodplains in the area, and there was floodplain when the storage facility came in. So they had to go through the process of amending the floodplain maps and doing all that was required through the state and federal government to do that, to make the development happen. And so one of the items is between special land use and site plan review, sometimes things change based on a number of factors. And in this case, there's a proposal for some floodplain mitigation, which we'll bring up on the site where there's a proposed area on the west side of the site instead of being wooded. The proposal is to clear the trees, and then this is called a floodplain compensatory storage area to be approved by FEMA. So it's still subject to FEMA review and approval. But for the purposes of site plan review this evening, it's a proposal to compensate for any floodplain filling that takes place elsewhere on the site. And as a result of the tree removal, the applicants have proposed to replace the trees in accordance with the ordinance. So there's no issues that we have in terms of the tree replacement based on what's proposed. One of the items with the floodplain mitigation and the compensatory cut is that according to the grading plan, the existing floodplain is proposed to be filled by 1,063 cubic yards, and the compensatory cut is proposed to be 1,207 cubic yards. So essentially, it's proposed to be a greater area of volume for the floodplain than what currently exists. So again, that would be subject to FEMA review and Eagle review for the floodplain items. So any recommendation is subject to any kind of federal and state requirements for that. But that is one thing that is new since the special land use review in terms of new information, including any new information that may be learned from the applicants once they have their use. Then they go farther through the site plan process and probably learn that this is the way to get the site developed according to the layout on the special land use. Aside from that, the layout of the site is mostly the same as it was during the special land use plan. There have been a few plan revisions in terms of signage and making sure the access is wide enough to have trucks in and out of the site from Research Drive. And part of the boulevard here will be removed on the east side. That's to allow a truck to come through and stack and turn, as well as to exit the site. So for a truck to get in and out of the site, that was necessary to cut off part of the boulevard to make that turn. And this was also something that was necessary to keep another curb cut from being placed along Michigan Avenue. So with that, our recommendation is approval of the site plan for the automobile service station establishment on the subject parcel, including approval of a landscape modification pursuant to Section 5.07 of the zoning ordinance for relocating the required foundation trees as illustrated on the site plan, subject to all federal, state, county, and township requirements, and subject to required corrections to the monument sign prior to Township Board review of the site plan. Two of those items, with the monument sign, there are some corrections required to meet the standards of Article 6(a) of the zoning ordinance. The other item is that the applicant proposes to relocate the foundation landscape trees, which are ornamental to outside of the site, or outside of the building area. So instead of having foundation trees planted up against the building, the applicant proposes to plant them around the perimeter of the parking lot. And the reason for that is as the trees grow larger and the canopies get into the driveway area, they're concerned about vehicles and trucks hitting those trees. So we recommend the relocation of those foundation ornamental trees outside of the building, but nevertheless on the site itself. So that concludes our staff report, and we'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Is the project sponsor here? You want to add anything? All right. Thank you.
Good evening. So my name's Ryan McEnhill with ENG. We're consulting engineers for Discount Tire, and we work with Discount Tire on all their new and existing stores throughout Michigan. So, you know, Patrick kind of laid things out, but I'll just add a couple of things and try to be brief. But Discount Tire is just tire and wheel sales only, so there's no other services that are provided, such as oil changes or things like that. So there's no hazardous substances or anything like that that are handled at the store. They operate 8 to 6, Monday through Saturday. Just a little bit about the building. I know that you folks have already seen this site plan one time, but it is a little bit different than kind of your prototypical Discount Tire, where maybe you see six to eight overhead doors. This is what they refer to as their drive-through building design. That kind of reduces that to just the two overhead doors, and everything's serviced inside the building, you know, from a noise standpoint. It's definitely beneficial to reduce noise outside the building. And then all of the new tires and dead tire storages all contained completely within the building. They have been using a state-of-the-art racking system that kind of utilizes that mezzanine level in the building as well. And then just quickly, from a traffic generation standpoint, typically there's only about 45 to 60 cars that they service in a day, and maybe 30 to 40 vehicles that come in daily for air checks. So that equates to about seven to 10 vehicles per hour, about 100 vehicles a day that enter into that site. So it's not a real big traffic generator from that standpoint. Most of their appointments now are done online, so it's, people aren't just, you know, coming in there cold, trying to get tires. So that kind of reduces the number of traffic visits as well. So Patrick, I already kind of talked about the truck movement, and that's with these sites, that's kind of a dictator or heavy component to the site design on a whole. We had originally looked at making a curb cut on the Michigan Avenue, which actually was approved by MDOT, but that was one of the concessions that we made, knowing that the township did want to reduce the number of curb cuts on the Michigan Avenue. But the problem with that, obviously, was those drive aisles with the boulevard section there on Research Drive are only 16 feet wide, which, you know, Discount Tire likes to use an interstate truck to be able to get in and out of the site. So that's kind of what's prompting that work to the median area there, so we can get that truck to make that turning movement out. And we'll be, and that is a private roadway, so I'll be working with the owner to get that approved. And then other than that, the floodplain and wetland permitting has already been submitted to the state. It's actually, was public notice on October 26th. That's a 20-day public notice period. So the application's been determined administratively complete, so we're kind of working through those channels. We obviously knew that there was going to be a floodplain component to this project. The wetland disturbance was actually a little bit of a surprise, because there has been previous projects and all the surveys that have been done for this site that didn't show any existing wetlands on this site. So there are about .66 wetland acres of disturbance that we'll be looking to compensate for using the mitigation bank as a mechanism to solve that issue. So that's all I have. I'm obviously here to answer any of the questions that the board may have, so thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Watkins, I'm gonna start with you this time.
Super quick, no questions except for one. So I'm looking, as a parcel egghead, I see 5008 as Research Drive, but I'm looking in the docs and it bears the 47,000 address for the monument sign. Do we know which one we're utilizing for this parcel?
It is the Research Drive. The 5008 Research Drive is the one that should be utilized.
Thank you.
Commissioner Eggenberger?
No questions, it looks great.
Commissioner Weber?
No questions.
Commissioner Foster?
No questions.
Commissioner Cruz?
Show me the entrances to the building, the main entrances. I see where the swing doors are. Those the entrances to the building at the north and south? Customers can enter from each side, is that right?
Correct. The main entrance there will be on that south side. There is another entrance door there on that north side as well, that if there was pedestrians or folks coming from that, those parking spaces on the right side.
I just wanted to make sure that the ADA spots had access to the building and they didn't have to walk around. On the west side, where you have the water line coming in, so this is something for engineering to decide. Typically, what you're showing there is a dead-end hydrant and fire suppression line and a domestic coming off the dead-end line. So what happens is, if that line breaks, you're out, completely out of water. You can't fight a fire. You'd have to go to Michigan Avenue or Research Drive. Usually, they'd make you loop the water main. There's a 12-inch on Research, so that if that line broke, you can stop it and feed it from one of those sides. That's something, that's engineering's call, I just wanted to bring it to their attention. But as far as the site plan layout, I'm okay with.
Very good. Commissioner Janowski?
No comments. Looks like it hasn't changed that much, so.
Okay. I think you addressed this when you were talking, but one of the questions I have, and I'm sorry, I forgot your name already, Ryan. Okay, sorry. Thank you. One of the questions I had as I was looking at this, and that didn't occur to me when we saw it the first time, is I know we recently, I mean, within the past few years, added a lot of parking at Bell Tire, redid their lot. Is that, am I remembering correctly, that we...
Over on Ford Road?
On Ford Road, yes. I thought so. I thought they came to us and we put additional... I know you said there's only 100 cars a day, more than likely. This is going to be a little less busy than that. But it seems to me we have, we had problems with like, people backing up at the air, the air spots, the air pumps.
They did move their...
Yeah. They added, didn't they add, I can't remember, around the one, like, the north side of the building, and we had to approve it into the... Yeah.
And they moved it out.
Yeah, this was, I don't know what year it was, but these are the plans where they added some parking on the north side of the site. And so this in gray, this light gray line is the previous curb. After that, it looks like they did add, yeah, they did add that north. And I think part of that was, they had the parking on the, there were on the south, there were on the east, but driving by, I think there's a lot of cars that either have been or waiting for service.
I think, and I think, cars used to actually park on the driveway in from Ford Road, so... So anyway, I just wanted to make sure that we were thinking about that and that we have plenty of parking here. But I think we do.
Yeah, so Discount Tire typically shoots for 40 to 50 spaces at each, and this one we have 39 outside parking spaces and then accounting for four inside the building. I think a lot of the online appointments have kind of kept the need for any more than that at bay, because, you know, people aren't dropping their cars off and say, "Oh, it's going to be two hours before we can get to it." Well, I'm going to leave, and so that doesn't happen much anymore.
Okay.
I'll add this question. The Discount Tire on Ford Road, I've never seen a real parking issue there. I see a number of open spots there throughout the day as well.
Good, good. Well, I'm sure that's true. I just wanted to mention it since it occurred to me that, but I think this all looks good, so. Anybody else from the commission have anything to add? Nope. All right. Do I hear a motion?
I'll do it. I move to recommend approval of, I'll bring this around. I move to recommend approval of the site plan for an automotive service station establishment used on parcel number 131-02-0001-000 at 5,008 Research Drive or 5008 Research Drive, including approval of a landscape modification pursuant to Section 5.07 of the zoning ordinance for relocating the required foundation trees as illustrated on the site plan, subject to all federal, state, county, and township requirements, and the subject to the required corrections to the monument sign plan prior to Township Board review of the site plan.
Support. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Eggenberger and support by Commissioner Foster. Any further discussion? All right. Commissioner Eggenberger, could you please call the vote?
Sure. Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Commissioner Eggenberger, yes. Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Janowski? Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
And Chairperson Zuber?
Yes. Very good. Thank you. And Patrick, next steps?
Sure. The next steps will be any plan revisions, once they take place, the plans will be ready to go to the Township Board for final action on the site plan.
Okay, thank you. Best of luck. Great, very good. And we have one more item of new business. We have the Warren and Canton Center Plaza. We are considering a site plan for parcel number 016-99-0013-003, also known as 7219 North Canton Center Road. The property is located at the northwest corner of Canton Center and Warren Roads. The proposed use is new construction of a multi-tenant commercial shopping center building for a restaurant... of a multi-tenant commercial shopping center building for restaurant and retail spaces. Patrick, please enlighten us.
Sure. Um, the proposal is for redevelopment of the northwest corner of Canton Center and Warren Road and it's 7219 here on the map. And it's the former PNC Bank Building, which, um, had a drive-through component to it. And the proposal is to demolish the building and to construct a multi-tenant, um, commercial shopping center, uh, which will be proposed a mix of retail and restaurant use. Um, here at the site, the curb cuts from Canton Center Road and Warren Road are proposed to remain the same. Uh, the location of these curb cuts, uh, appear to be as far from the intersection as possible, which is good, which allows for, uh, better turning and, and stacking movements if they're needed. Um, there's an existing, um, D cell lane in to the site, um, from Canton Center Road. Along Warren Road, there, there isn't one. Um, and there's, uh, left turn lanes, um, on both Warren and Canton Center adjacent to the site. Uh, one of the items that we've, um, tried to encourage for this site is to have some kind of a cross connection to the adjacent site to the north and west. And our discussions with the shopping center owner to the north and west, um, haven't produced any, um, willingness to do a cross connection with the subject site. Uh, because the, both proposed uses are permitted principal uses in the C1 Village Shopping Zoning District, and they're not located in the Central Business District overlay closer to Ford Road. Uh, there's, uh, nothing we can really do to force both parties to do a cross connection. In the Central Business District along Ford Road, it's an ordinance requirement. Um, if these were special land uses, there are certain discretionary standards, um, that can be used to get cross connections. Um, the applicant for, uh, this evening's proposal, in our discussions with the applicant about cross connection, um, they've indicated willingness to do it, but they need someone on the other side of the line to make that happen. And in doing so, um, if they were willing to do it at that point, then they could design the site around, um, that cross connection. But, um, as it is with the site here, uh, what they've proposed to do is to have the parking row on the north side, um, the east side, and the south side. Um, the proposed shopping center is 7,418 square feet and, um, it'll, um, it's in the C1 District and in the C1 Village Shopping District, uh, for a shopping center, that district has some unique requirements. And, um, most of the requirements are met. Uh, there are three requirements in particular that the site does not meet and the applicants have applied for a variance. Um, those three are as follows. The first is that, um, the, the building has, or the, the, for a shopping center, there has to be at least two buildings on a site. And that's to create some separation, to not have one large building and, um, to, to make the site look, um, like it's got more pedestrian-friendly and sized buildings as opposed to large, massive shopping centers. So, um, the, the issue with having two separate buildings on this site is that the site's very restricted in terms of the size. The minimum front yard setbacks from the roads are 60 feet. So by the time the building meets the front yard setbacks, the side and rear yard setbacks with parking and circulation, um, there's really not room on the site to do two separate buildings. And if, and if it did happen, then it would be dramatically restricting the size of the building or putting the building in setbacks, which would also require a variance application. So the applicant has applied for a variance from the requirement for at least two buildings on the site and the variance is to have the one building. Um, the, the C1 District states that a building shall not be more than 7,500 square feet or a length of 120 feet. Uh, this building does meet those standards. So, um, there's an attempt to size the building according to the C1 standards and not exceed those. It's just with the size of the site, um, there's just not room there for two buildings and to meet the other standards. The second variance that the applicant has applied for is, in the C1 District, shopping center structures are required to be oriented around a courtyard, a square, or a village green. Um, the applicant has applied for a variance from that requirement because, um, there's really not room to have the courtyard and there's not more than the one building. So there's really not the layout to have that courtyard at the village green. And then finally, the third variance the applicant has applied for is that, um, parking in a front yard for a shopping center in the C1 District is prohibited, although parking is allowed in one of the front yards, whichever is the major, um, road adjacent. And the applicant has applied for parking in both front yards. And the reason being is after meeting the front yard setbacks, uh, from both Warren and Canton Center Road and the building is pushed back, um, there's really not room to meet all the required, uh, parking for the number of spaces and only have that located along one of the frontages. So based on the size, um, and what the setbacks allow for, uh, the site in terms of a layout, the applicants have applied for a variance from that requirement to allow for parking in both front yards. Um, a couple other items in the C1 District where the applicant has met the requirements. The first is that the architecture has to have, um, a pitch on the building of at least 512. And, um, there's a seen metal roof that has a pitch of 512. It doesn't extend to the peak, but it conceals the flat roof behind it. So it's an attempt to meet the 512 pitch standards along the entire perimeter of the building. The other item is that, um, the C1 District requires, um, certain amenities to be on the site. And it includes examples like a bell or a clock tower, a sculpture, a fountain, gazebo, or other form of public art, et cetera. So that et cetera, I think, allows for, um, the planning commission and board to, uh, substitute any of the other amenities with something else. The applicant has proposed a clock tower in the southeast part of the site, close to the intersection. Um, that's, uh, just a way for the applicant to meet the letter of the ordinance where it asks for an onsite amenity. Um, if the clock is not desirable to the planning commissioner or the board, um, the planning commission could deem something else as an amenity. And one example could be the proposed bicycle rack near the building entrance to be an eligible amenity. Um, there could be other amenities, uh, discussed among the planning commission and the board as well. Uh, for the parking itself, uh, based on the square footage of the building and the shopping center standard, there are 30 parking spaces required. The applicant proposes 34 parking spaces, um, which exceeds 10% above the minimum number of parking spaces. Uh, the zoning ordinance caps the number of parking spaces at 10% above the minimum, which would be 33. Uh, the applicant proposes 34 just to try to, uh, maximize the onsite parking as well as to account for, uh, the fact that, um, there's a high likelihood that there won't be a shared parking agreement, um, agreed upon between the two adjacent property owners. Uh, we hope that someday there will be and perhaps even cross access, but, uh, what we have to work with now is there's not. So I think if there was, um, more restaurant space on the site, for example, and there was more demand because a restaurant tends to generate more traffic than a typical shopping center where the uses are undefined, having those extra parking spaces onsite would be helpful. Uh, so we recommend that modification to have 34 parking spaces. Um, like some of the other, uh, cases before you this evening, um, I, some of the foundation landscaping has been, uh, moved away from, um, the foundation and elsewhere on the site, just based on, um, the available areas around the site. And, um, this particular site has a proposal for outdoor dining on the east side of the site. So, um, to have outdoor dining adjacent to the building, um, I think there, there are some green spaces, but not entirely what's required by the ordinance. So the applicant, um, requests a modification from the landscape standards to relocate that foundation landscaping elsewhere on the site around the perimeter of the parking lot. Um, and then the last item that we want to mention is, um, in, um, this zoning district, the front yard landscaping has to be 20 feet wide. And specifically, a berm three feet high and 20 feet wide is required along the frontage. Uh, the existing berms are much narrower than the 20-foot required. So there's an existing non-conformity there. Uh, the berm along Warren Road is proposed to be widened to be 20 feet and meet the ordinance. And the berm along North Canton Center Road is proposed to be widened to 14 and a half feet. Um, so we recommend approval of the wider berms, albeit, uh, narrower berm along Canton Center Road of the 14 foot, six inches. And that's based on, um, looking at the site, um, from Canton Center Road to have 14 and a half feet here, uh, plus one row of parking, plus the drive aisle, plus the area in front of the building to be dedicated to, um, outdoor dining and other pedestrian amenities. Um, we recommend a little bit narrower berm width along Canton Center Road. So what that'll mean is the berm will be a little bit shorter, but the required front yard landscaping is proposed along that frontage. So the materials in terms of the trees and shrubs will be there. Uh, so with that, staff's recommendation is approval of the site plan for a multi-tenant commercial shopping center at the subject site located at the northwest corner of North Canton Center Road and Warren Road, including approval of a landscape modification pursuant to section 5.07 of the zoning ordinance for foundation landscape depth and berm width along North Canton Center Road, and approval of the proposed 34 parking spaces pursuant to section 4.01 C6 of the zoning ordinance, uh, subject to all state, county, and township requirements, uh, including revisions to the signage plan, landscape plan, and lighting plan prior to township board review of the site plan, and also subject to the requested variances from section 6.05 of the zoning ordinance. Uh, the items noted for the signage plan and the lighting plan were relatively minor. So those are things that can easily be corrected between, um, the reviews. If the planning commission recommends approval, that can be easily corrected between planning commission review and board review. So that concludes our report. And we'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. All right. Project sponsor? I am assuming that that would be you two gentlemen? Thank you. Do you have anything to add to what Patrick already said? Okay, anything? Okay. Very good. Well, we'll have, we, we may have questions for you. So thank you. All right. Anybody from the board? I'm gonna start down with Commissioner Janowski this time.
No comments.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz?
Go to SP01. So you weren't not able to get agreements with the, the west and north property owner? Is that right?
Correct.
So we should take that striping off because it, it leads to parking spots on, on the north and west, right? I mean, you're drawing people to this crosswalk and then you're just deadening them into a parking spot. It's not a real connection.
I mean, okay, those, those crosswalks.
That's striping? Yeah, is that crosswalk striping?
Yeah, this is, um, adjacent to the, the loading area. Uh, so there are 10 by 50 loading area there. I think, um, I don't know if that's, that's intended for the truck itself or if it's a crossing to, um, alert traffic that there could be crossing through there. But, uh, that, uh, striping doesn't carry to the western lot line.
I just think it's confusing because crosswalks are for the public. It's not for the truck driver, you know? So you're inviting people to use a crosswalk that doesn't lead to anywhere, you know? That, the east and south makes sense because you have connections, you have real connections. But the north and west really doesn't serve a purpose, you know?
Yeah, we could probably have that removed.
I mean, does that make sense? Right? I mean, it's not a real connection. So the other thing is, um, you, you're taking, are you repaving the whole lot or just taking portions of the lot and paving?
Could come to the mic, please.
Good evening, commissioners, and it's good to see you again. Uh, my name is Najim Samow, CDPA Architects. And I have with me here is Dr. Hider, who is the, uh, client and the sponsor of the project. To answer your question, is, um, as we have a existing building there, that would have to be removed first. And then the, the lot eventually has to be paved totally. It has to be, obviously, a new lot. Uh, but we do not intend, uh, because if you look at the existing, uh, building, you would see it's mostly a parking lot around it. And as you know, parking lot has stone below it and what have you. So we would like to minimize disturbing of the parking lot, yes, as much as we can.
My concern is the lot's not in great shape to begin with. Uh, it's in fair shape. It's not terrible, but...
I, I think it's going to be worse by the time we, we're done with the construction.
Hold on, hold on. Let me, let me finish.
Sure.
So you're proposing asphalt parking or paving in these hatched areas. It's gonna look terrible. I'll be honest with you. It, it, it's gonna look like a quilted blanket because you're gonna have light and dark and, and this is a prominent corner. Um, if you're gonna do something like this, uh, maybe you can seal coat. Seal coat's cheap. That way it's uniform and then your striping will come out. Right now, for the PNC, there's existing pavement markings like drive-through. To remove those, it, it's not gonna look good either. There's, it's, it's gonna be confusing when you just try to remove it and leave the pavement as is. So maybe a seal coat with a restriping will make it uniform and look better. And it's not, it's, it's a cheaper alternative.
Now I understand your concern. I, uh, when I asked it at first, I did not, honestly. Now I understand it and I, uh, there's no way that the parking is going to be a patch. Like I said, by the time we're done with construction, machinery is going to cause some damage to it. So I would venture to say right now is that we would probably be milling it and then rebuilding it.
We should show that on the plans then if we're gonna approve it. I, I agree with you.
Yeah, with the engineer.
The more machinery comes, a mill and cap would serve a better purpose here and especially for your tenants. Um, I think that's a better plan. Yeah. But right now, you're not showing a mill and cap. You, you're showing these patchworks of pavement here.
Commissioner Cruz? Okay, thank you. Commissioner Foster?
Yeah.
Oh, please.
Good evening. Uh, do I have to press the button? A malachiter. Um, to answer your question, it will be completely removed and redone. Uh, no patchwork for me. Uh, but I know that this is a revised plan of a revised plan of a revised plan of a revised plan. So those little details haven't been changed.
That's a big detail.
But it's, uh, the biggest detail is, uh, the devil's in the details. So we will, I'll, I'll make note that it will be, uh, done perfectly.
So you're gonna repave the lot or mill?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Out that, Patrick, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. Commissioner Foster?
Um, I have no questions. Just a comment that I'm glad to see this property being redone in this case.
Commissioner Weber?
Patrick, are we gonna make note of the letter that we received?
I was gonna mention that, but yes, please, please do.
I understand the owner's concerns. However, I, personally, I think the, it sounds more like anti-competition than it does, uh, anti-development in that particular case. Um, that being said, I would strongly encourage you guys to try and play nice with each other. Cause I would, I agree with Commissioner Foster. I really like to see that corner get redeveloped instead of a vacant building sitting there. Um, other than that, I don't really have a problem with the development.
And that reminds me, today, we had received an email from the adjacent owner to the west and north, and so we'd emailed that out to the planning commissioners. The letter seemed to be directed more at the zoning board of appeals because of the variance application, and that adjacent property owner got public notice mailed in accordance with the public hearing for the variance. So that's what originally made them aware of the proposal. But they asked that the letter be shared with the planning commission and zoning board of appeals.
Thank you. Anything else? Commissioner Weber?
No, thank you.
All right. Very good. Thanks. Commissioner Eggenberger?
Yeah, I have no concerns. Thank you.
Mr. Watkins?
Really quick, Dr. Hyder, so I'm looking at the, what is it, 7,500 square feet that you're proposing under one roof. There are about four spaces, 1,800 square feet in terms of use. For retail, that's a tad small. It would be more something along the lines of professional services. Can you talk to me really quickly about, one thing, proposed use in tenants? And then second, had you considered professional services then instead of something like retail, especially when there's retail right behind you?
Professional services is a consideration. I am a dentist, and a second office is a potential. So that is the possible, not for sure, but possible, proposed addition to this site is to make a dental office. On part of the site, not all of it. And a restaurant on the other side.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, I, um, there was something in my mind, and I totally lost it. I was actually, it was more about what you were talking about with the letter. Oh, yeah, I was going to mention, years ago, I inadvertently caused a rear-end accident in trying to turn into the PNC from going north on Canton Center Road because there's a double yellow line, and you can't cross the double yellow line. So I put my signal on and slowed down and stopped to make my left turn into that north entrance, and the woman behind me stopped, the woman behind her did not stop, and I felt terrible. So I would definitely encourage, if possible, and I understand it's not always possible, across, across parking agreement, cross easement, I mean, it would, if that hadn't been the only way to get to the bank, other than I should have turned left onto Warren and then turned right into the bank. But obviously, I didn't know I was going to cause an accident. But if there had been another way to get in there, I would have preferred to drive past that entrance and come back, but anyway.
I've had multiple tries, and it was unsuccessful.
Well, I'm putting this on the record. Hopefully, they will watch the video and see it.
Can I ask, I mean, I see what the letter says, but can I ask what the, have they given you reasons other than what we've seen in the letter?
They'd like to see a gas station there, and they can do it.
Seriously?
Yeah.
Okay, well, interesting. Anybody else have anything from the commission?
I wanted to ask about, you said there was some options for, did you say a clock tower?
Yeah, yes, thank you.
Yeah, that, that's the amenity proposed.
Okay. Who reviews, who has a say in that? Do we?
Yeah. The way it's written is it gives a number of amenities, and I think it's, it says something in the fact of includes, and I think it ends the sentence with et cetera. So I think it's really at the discretion of the planning commission and the board to approve or modify whatever the amenity it would see fit based on the site development.
If I may, we have a bike rack and the, and the tower. So if you don't like to see the tower, that's fine. We can remove that.
Do we have plans that we can see for the tower?
Yep, it's under.
Page 319 of your packet, if you want to try to flip to it, but that's it.
Here's my issue with clock towers. I'm just, yeah, something like that. No. Oftentimes...
Deloreans.
Oftentimes, they're not maintained very well. And the one that really is a thorn in my side is the, and this is not in Canton, it's in Pluma, is the clock tower behind the Cadillac dealership. And I speak about that because I had a hand in developing that clock tower. But the clock faces are never coordinated. They're never, I mean, there's one that might be right, the other two are not right. Now it's getting shabby looking. It really needs to be repainted. And granted, we're not talking about something here that's that size, but I would rather, it's nice, but I just, I would rather see something else, whether it was a piece of art. The bike rack is a good amenity, something more useful, I believe.
I love the idea of a bike rack. I mean, that's an area where there are kids who take their bikes, and it's nice to have a place where they can go and lock their bikes up, and adults too. But, yeah, I share the same concerns about a clock tower.
Anybody else have a thought?
I like a bike rack.
I always like a bike rack.
So you're proposing a bike rack and the clock tower in these plans? Is that right? So who would be responsible for maintaining the clock?
That would be the property owner. And I pulled up the part of the ordinance, and it states the following. It says, "One or more of the following features or similar amenities shall be provided within the village shopping district." And then it gives the list. And then after gazebo or other form of art, it says et cetera. So I think that leaves it to the planning commission and board to, in cooperation with the applicant, to figure out what that amenity or amenities are.
Sit here and debate all night about what the appropriate amenity is, I mean...
If it's okay with the board, we can keep the bike rack as the final decision, and I'm okay with that. I have six children myself, so we have a lot of bikes at home that can probably park there, too.
Need like a four-car garage for all those bikes.
We do have that, too.
I can see why. Excellent. All right. Anybody, anybody want to make a motion?
Yeah, I think we, and if we specify not the clock and that the bike racks are the amenity, that way, we can have that in the motion part of the record so that we can affirm that that was the acceptable amenity to the planning commission.
Got it.
He's really good at this.
I move to recommend, if I would, Madam Chair. I move to recommend the site plan for the multi-tenant commercial shopping center at 7219, North Canton Center Road, parcel number 016, tag 99, tag 0013, tag 003, located at the northwest corner of North Canton Center Road and Warren Road, including approval of a landscape modification pursuant to Section 5.07 of the zoning ordinance for foundation landscape depth and berm width along North Canton Center Road, and approval of the proposed 34 parking spaces pursuant to Section 4.01(c)(6) of the zoning ordinance, subject to all state, county, and township requirements, including revision to the signage plan, landscape plan, and lighting plan prior to township board review of the site plan, and subject to the requested variances from Section 6.05, in addition to the acceptable amenity of a bike rack.
Beautifully said. Do we have a support?
Support.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Weber. Any further discussion? All right. Commissioner Eggenberger, please call the vote. Okay. Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Commissioner Eggenberger, yes. Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Janowski? Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Zuber?
Yes. Awesome. Thank you very much, gentlemen, and good luck with your project. And apparently, next steps are to go to before the township board.
Yep. If there's any planner revisions, those will have to be made before township board consideration, including removal of the clock.
Awesome. Yeah, and the ZBA, yeah, of course.
Yep. We'll note the paving, as well as the zoning board of appeals.
Point of order, Madam Chair, since we're talking about clocks, please note that the clock in the room is incorrect and should be turned back one hour.
At least, yes.
It's always wrong.
It's, yes, it's been wrong for quite a long time. But thank you. Yeah, really.
And that the clock on the plan is right twice a day.
True. Very deep, very deep.
Every time I see a broken clock, yeah. Yep.
All right. We, we have more on our agenda. We have planning commission meeting schedule for 2024, during which we will consider approval of the 2024 planning commission meeting schedule. Patrick, could you tell us more?
Sure. There, every year, the planning commission sets its schedule for the following year, usually at the November meeting. So the only difference with the 24 meeting schedule than in previous years is we have a column for work sessions to reserve. As we go through the master plan and ordinance updates, we could have several work sessions throughout the year, so I just wanted to reserve those dates and get those on the calendar, including having the room reserved, et cetera. So also in 2024, there's a series of holidays that conflict, election days that conflict. So it's going to be a pretty irregular schedule as that first Monday gets bumped, but this is kind of the best we came up with. Every year, it seems that we have at least one or two special meetings because we may have another bump somewhere or something lines up differently. So this was our best attempt at it, and if the planning commission recommends approval, then goes to the board for final approval.
Thank you, Patrick. Anybody want to comment? Thoughts?
Do we need to make room for, like, post-Super Bowl?
Hmm. I didn't check the Super Bowl date. I did check the college national championship game, which is on January 8th, but last year, I recommended moving it, and...
It didn't work out so well.
I'm not, I'm not going to comment on a potential national championship game, so I'm, more.
Boom.
Choose anything you want, I'm good.
Go blue.
I went to University of Cincinnati, and I don't care. I, yeah, mhm.
Think it's best if we don't discuss it? There's no need to jinx it again, I think. We have to put a TV up.
Oh, we... Shall we make a motion on this, folks?
We need to move it.
Yes.
Madam Chair, and I move to approve the proposed 2024 planning commission schedule as proposed.
Support.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Foster. Any further discussion? All right. I guess this can be a voice vote, so all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Awesome. Motion carries. We have a schedule, sorry. Or a schedule. Yes, I did live in England for a while, but... Now, next item on the agenda, everyone's favorite section of the, of the agenda, we have the master plan discussion with Aaron Schluto. And it's always fun. Our fun updates. There is, it's okay. You're switching to Patrick? Patrick hit the mic where you don't have to hold your finger down. The red, I guess the red, the red, because...
Sometimes it doesn't come up.
Oh, that's super annoying. Okay. And had to move, so we...
I had to move, sorry about that.
We had to give her some time.
Yeah. Okay. Sorry. Thank you for appeasing me. So this evening, we're going to go through the master plan update. There was a memo included in your packet, which went over what we discussed at the last workshop and meeting, and what we're going to be discussing this evening. So just as a recap, this is where we are in the overall Canton master plan process. We've completed our public engagements for the most part, and now we're on to analyzing the feedback and drafting some documents, maps, and conceptual designs. So at the October 16th Planning Commission workshop, we focused on housing and neighborhoods, looking at residential development, existing housing stock, amenities, neighbor, or housing types, and neighborhood connections. And there were a couple of things that we had talked about that the planning commission had requested some more information on, related to minimum floor area for single-family residential dwellings, specifically on microhousing, and then some homeowner repair maintenance programs for the township. So these are the two things we're going to be focusing on this evening very quickly. So residential dwelling size is kind of broken up into two specific categories. One is related to the schedule of regulations, where we just look at the minute reducing or reviewing the requirements for minimum floor area or square footage for residential dwellings. And then the second part is looking at tiny homes, small homes, microhousing, however you want to classify that. But those are two separate topics, so we wanted to look at those both individually. So at your desk, you'll also have a copy of the PowerPoint, just to make this easier so you're not trying to look at all of this information. So this...
Excuse me, Erin, I'm not sure this is any easier to look at it. This is tiny.
It is tiny, and I can send it, I can send the PowerPoint to you as well. And this is mostly just to illustrate...
I just had to find my glasses, I'm good.
Oh, okay, good. This is mostly here to illustrate the requirement for the minimum floor area for single-family residential dwellings in Canton Township. So this is a schedule of regulations right out of the zoning ordinance. And so highlighted at the, at the far right of the table is the minimum floor area requirement for homes with a basement or without a basement. So 1,800 square feet, 2,000 square feet, 1,400 square feet, 1,600 square feet. So there is a minimum square footage requirement throughout the township. Does there need to be? So that's something that we wanted to discuss and look at in a little bit more detail. So just to facilitate this discussion, some background data, looking at home sizes through the years. So Levittown, New York, the first planned community built in 1947, or the first phase in 1947, the average home size was 750 square feet. It was two bedrooms, a kitchen, a living room, no basement. The median size of a single-family home built in 2022 is, was 2,299 square feet. So a little different. And then the table on the side here is Canton through the years. So the number of new homes built, and then the average square footage of built, of homes in that, within that decade. And this is just some background information. It's mostly just nerd stuff because I find this all very interesting. But to facilitate our conversation, you can see that the average square footage is continuing to increase, right? People, that's what people want. However, things are starting to change, right? Some people want to live in a smaller home, or they want to downsize. Well, if the new homes being built with the modern amenities keep going up and up and up, the housing stock for those who want to downsize is older, and they're not having the same amenities or the same modern conveniences. So here's just to illustrate how this could work for reduced housing size, if we wanted to pursue this. This is just an average lot. This comes right from our zoning ordinance that shows where the side yard, the front yard, rear yard is. This is not related to setbacks in this slide. So as an example, this could be a property in the R2 zoning district, and these are some of the minimum requirements or the setback requirements within that district based on the, in the schedule of regulations. So the red box area is a hypothetical setback area, and everything inside it is the buildable area. So this is not to scale, so please do not take this to, take me to task on this. This is purely for illustrative purposes. So if you look at this, this house, this could be a 1,600-square-foot home with a basement or 1,800-square-foot without, okay? But what if someone wanted a 1,400-square-foot? Okay, so you shave off a little bit there, it still kind of meets the same, the same outline, the same design, okay? So, the red box area is a hypothetical setback area, and everything inside it is the buildable area. So, this is not to scale, so please do not take this to take me to task on this, this is purely for illustrative purposes. So if you look at this, this house, this could be a 1,600 square foot home with a basement or 1,800 square foot without, okay? But what if someone wanted a 1,400 square foot? Okay, so you shave off a little bit there, it still kind of meets the same, the same outline, the same design, okay? Is 200 square feet really that big of a difference, is that going to impact the neighborhood? What about a 1,000 square foot? Take a little bit more off, it still fits in the neighborhood, still fits in the buildable area if that's, if that's what a homeowner wanted. Now, this is all independent of design requirements and things like that, so, um, this is purely just to illustrate how the, the building footprint would look from an aerial viewpoint. So, that kind of illustrates the, the notion of, you know, maybe looking at our schedule of regulations to reduce the housing size. Not everybody's going to want a 1,000 square foot home or a 1,400 square foot home. The biggest house we found on record was built in 2008 and it's 13,000 square feet, so some people still do want those big, larger homes. But by placing a minimum requirement of square footage on, on people of 1,400 square feet, 1,800 square feet, you might be putting them in a position where then they have to go for a variance, just because they don't want something quite so big. And so, reducing it or, or reviewing the minimum, uh, floor area just gives us an opportunity to be more inclusive to what people want in their homes, as long as it fits within the character of, of the neighborhood. And this is independent of, of developments that come through, through the PDD process, because that's something completely different. This is looking at an R2 zoning district on three acres, something like that, that's outside of a PDD or homeowners association. So they have the, the ability to design and create a home that, that fits their needs and wants. Now, we can pause here or we can go continue right through to the microhousing topic?
I'll wait, because the, the microhousing is where, is what I was going to talk about.
Yep, that's next, okay. So, um, the planning commission also asked for some info, uh, additional information on microhousing, so it's called small homes, it's called tiny homes, it's called microhousing, it can, it can encompass a couple of different things. So, I put up a couple of, uh, newer visuals for you to, to see how these could work. Maybe a little bit nicer, better quality than the ones we had seen before, because I know that that was a concern. So they're typically less than 500 square feet, uh, they can be built on a foundation or wheels, um, and because these are not, um, these are not as popular, uh, these are custom designed to fit what the family needs and wants. So, the exterior here is just an example, and then you can see, um, an interior space and, um, how, how it could be utilized. But, um, these have become popular, especially with, uh, um, people watching HGTV and they have a whole, a whole show designed on people who want to live in these tiny homes, and, I mean, you go to Ikea and you look at, yeah, I could live in 300 square feet, that looks easy and fun. But when you look, when you look at it and see how, how creative they have to be to maintain their, their space, and how, uh, how clean they have to keep it, just because it is so small, it is, it is interesting. So it is custom-built for, for the family, for the people. So one of the questions we had was, why, why would you want to live tiny? All right, so these are just a couple of the, couple of the reasons that I've run into, so economics. It's much cheaper to build a tiny home. Now, there are limitations in terms of the zoning, um, people are having difficulty getting, um, uh, getting loans and things like that, but it is economically more feasible to build a tiny home. Some of the, uh, quotes I was getting was 115,000, uh, $115,000, as opposed to 3,400,000 dollars for, uh, three, four-bedroom home. Demographics, there are more and more people living, living alone these days, so maybe they want something that is their own personal space, but they can't afford to, to buy a brand-new home, they can't afford to, to buy the, the homes that are on the market right now. Green living, some people want to live a little bit more simple lifestyle and want to be, live a sustainable lifestyle. They don't want all of the, the, the big bangs and whistles that, um, that, that are currently on the market or that the market is demanding at the moment. Simpler living, if you look back at the, the image before, they have to be very careful about what they put in their space. You know, there isn't the, you know, the two o'clock Saturday trip to Target, and they're like, oh, look what I bought, and I bought this, and I bought this. They have to be meticulous about what they, what they buy. So, um, in addition to simpler living, it's the minimalist lifestyle that a lot of people, uh, are attracted to. And technology, with technology changing, you know, a lot of people don't need, um, an entire, uh, room filled with the, the stereo equipment, or a big-screen TV, or, uh, an entire library, because all of those things can be, um, transported with them on a device, either a laptop, or an iPad, or a Kindle, or even your own phone. And then the shorter construction time. So, one of the, uh, websites I was looking at quoted that there's an approximate 12 weeks total time from, uh, conceptual design and plan until the tiny home was completed. So, if you have a short time span and you want to get into this, this home quickly, you're not going to be able to get into, uh, a Pulte or an MI Homes within 12 weeks. I don't know how aggressive this, this, um, timeline is, it's, it's pretty, pretty intense, but, uh, that was something that they were really, really proud of, that they could get you in your home in 12 weeks. Okay, I can pause there and we can talk residential stuff before we move on to the home repair maintenance programs? Or I can keep moving forward?
So, with regard to the microhousing, I've been trying to wrap my head around it, I, I do think it's intriguing. It's obviously not for everybody, but in the, in the interest of being more inclusive, I go back to a comment I made at the, at the meeting last month about, uh, young people coming out of college with significant debt and, and that sort of thing, and not being able to afford a $300,000 mortgage or, or more for a starter home. And something like this maybe would be more akin to a, I don't know, an efficiency apartment or something, maybe, maybe more than a little efficiency apartment. I, I can't see them being, put here and there, I, I see them, like, in a specific area of the township. Like, I think you and Erin, Erin, you and I mentioned that property off of behind Ford Road where they were proposing the hotels, uh, a couple of years ago, behind Basement Burger Bar. If you put, develop that property with something like that, then it would, you'd have it close to another single-family neighborhood that would maybe, maybe there's a better transition than something of that nature. But, uh, it's an interesting concept, and as far as the schedule of regulation on, uh, square foot, minimum square footage, I, I tend to agree that there shouldn't be such a, a high number to, to meet, uh, the minimum square footage you need in the residential areas. I, I think, like you said, yes, people do still want big homes, but, yeah, and I, I talk about conversations my wife and I have all the time about downsizing. We would still like to stay in Canton, and we'd like to live in one of the, you know, nicer neighborhoods or whatever, but we don't want to go from a 2,500 square foot house to another 2,500 square foot house. So, um, I, I can definitely see merit to reduce, reducing the minimum required of square footage in the, in the residential areas.
I agree with Commissioner Weber.
Has, any areas besides, did Detroit have these microhousing?
Yeah, it, it's, um,
Any other places, though? In, in Michigan?
Detroit was the only one that I have found here in Michigan, um, and theirs is, um, specifically related to ending homeless. It's a homeless initiative program, um, to try to combat homelessness. They have, they're currently being built, and they're no longer accepting applications, it's, it's become a very popular program. But I haven't found any of the other ones here in Michigan. I know it's very popular out in Seattle, um, popular out in Oregon where, you know, housing prices are, are really, really high. But it's, the, the programs that I saw in Detroit was mostly to combat homelessness.
I think they're also nice as ADUs. Allowing somebody to build something really small in their backyard to, to use as a, an in-law suite, or for their adult children, or as an office space or something.
Yeah, the, the microhousing and the ADUs are, are related in that sense, because you could, you could plop one of those tiny homes down in your backyard and, and call it a, a, an accessory, accessory dwelling unit for that purpose, yeah.
I don't like the idea of allowing them to be on wheels. I mean, that's, to me, that's a mobile home park.
And I specifically did not include any pictures with, with wheels, because I felt like that was probably going to be the, the thought.
Just thinking about how our ordinance is structured now, if you had a development of these, would that, would that come like under a PDD-type situation or something of that nature?
Yeah, yes, it would, and the density would still be applicable to, um, to these tiny home discussions as, as things are written right now. If that's something that, that the planning commission and the township board wanted to modify to allow for an increased density for these type of tiny homes, however, it is based on what the traffic study would do, the, if the infrastructure could, could sustain it, and all of those other things that go into, uh, residential reviews through PDDs.
So kind of piggybacking on the question of Commissioner Cruz about these and the ones in Detroit, are they being built by a developer, or is the city, has the city totally funded those? Because you mentioned that they're for homeless, for homeless people, so what's, yeah, I can't see an MI Homes or, uh, Robertson Brothers coming in and building a development of tiny homes, so.
Right, right, right. I know there's a partnership there, I don't know exactly how it's worked out, I can, I can research that and send, send you some more information.
Super quickly, I can add some context to that, so Cast Community Services is the provider, um, it's a nonprofit that is, um, of course, their mission is to end homelessness, and they partner with a developer to build 25 tiny homes, uh, on Detroit's west side, Elmhurst area. I will tell you that, uh, they're a significant subsidy to be able to produce a home, uh, listen, cost to build per square foot is cost to build per square foot. Yeah, it, it doesn't matter whether you build 3,000 or 750. And so, the opportunity there is to be able to impact, uh, the homelessness problem and not necessarily create a development. So, it's, it's a little bit different, uh, than being able to kind of put it into a, um, a, a more mainstream community. Although, um, I will say, uh, as, um, Commissioner and trustee has indicated, I'm sorry, um, um, forgive, forgive me, um, Erin has, yes, oh my God, I'm, I'm, it's, yeah, it's, that clock is
I'm going to blame the time
Yeah, yeah, the clock is, uh,
Elevated, I like it.
Taking my mind.
Beats too, we're confused.
I almost called you Patrick, but no, no, no.
That would still be a compliment, it's okay.
No, 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 I, I'll stop talking just a second, but the, the indicators here are that that was purpose-driven and doing it here, um, in a development manner is going to look a lot different, uh, than it would, uh, in Detroit.
And that's why I asked the question, what's the, what was the, obviously the motivating factor in the city of Detroit was to address homelessness. But, as Erin mentioned, uh, if you have a place like in Seattle, now granted, I think they have a homeless problem in Seattle too, and in Oregon. But I also know the cost of living in both those places is extremely high. So, I, I would wonder if in any of those situations, if there's, if there's any commonalities we can draw between the two. I mean, like I said, I'm very intrigued by the idea, particularly for, I'll call, I'll, for lack of a better term, I'll call them for starter homes. But, you know, if, if they're viewed strictly as, uh, a means to address the homeless problem, I, and not that that's not, that can, I'm sure there's homeless, I'm sure there's a home, a significant homeless population here in Canton as well. I'm just thinking, to have a development or whatever of, of tiny homes, it, it probably has to be a different driving factor for it.
I think one of the issues, um, that I see in Canton is a lot of folks grow up in Canton, are educated here, their families live here, and when they're either going through college or just graduating from college, there's nowhere for them to go in Canton that's affordable. And so, I kind of see this as something that can help, um, with that and keep folks in Canton who want to remain in Canton, um, but are priced out by the larger square foot homes, and homes that are built more for families and stuff.
Why, why hasn't anybody accomplished this in the surrounding communities, you think?
Well, I know that for, for our purposes, tiny homes is something that is still fairly new, right? So it's something that we are, are talking about and maybe putting into our master plan, maybe they've, uh, looked at ordinances, but a lot of communities still have the minimum square footage requirement in their, in their ordinances to keep the housing stock looking uniform and, and similar in size. So, I don't know that this, this type of trend has, has come forward yet. If it has, um, it has come across, come through piecemeal, and it's been someone who buys a property who wants to live in a minimalist, simpler, greener way on their, on their property, on their lot, not a developer coming through and wanting to build something, something tiny like that. Because their, their motivation is, is money too. So, they want to make sure that they get the return on their investment. Not saying that that won't happen, um, but that just hasn't happened yet here, here in Michigan, that I'm aware of. But this could be an opportunity for us to be ahead of that curve, and when developments do come through, we already have, have the mechanisms and have the policies and have everything in place for that to come. So, other communities are like, well, let's figure out how to do this, we can say, come here, we already got it, we're set for you.
So if a developer came in right now, he could still do a PDD with that type of development right now? And we'd have to find a way to approve it, is that right? But the ordinances are not in place?
We don't have anything in our master plan to put our, to put into ordinance to allow that type of housing type. Now, the PDD does allow, uh, modification of housing size and setbacks and things like that. So theoretically, something like that could happen, as long as it meets the density underneath, but there's nothing in our master plan or in our ordinances that currently address it. So that's, that's the point of what we're looking at now, in case there's somebody who wants to come in with a property and do something more minimal.
Has anyone approached Canton, any developer so far, that wanted to develop?
Tiny homes?
Yeah.
Not that I'm aware of, Patrick, no, no.
I'd almost like to see a real plan and a product in a, in a, in a PDD form, just so that we can see, you know, how the land's being used, the product, the demographic, everything, before we change all our rules to accommodate it, you know?
We're not changing our rules per se, we're just master-planning for it, just because it goes in the master plan doesn't mean we have to, doesn't mean it has to go into the zoning ordinance.
The only thing at this point that would be looked at in the zoning ordinance after the master plan would be adopted would be reducing the minimum floor area, which is what we already talked about earlier. So, maybe instead of 1,400 being the minimum, maybe 1,000 is the minimum, which is still higher than the tiny homes 500 square foot, which typically is.
I'm okay with that, lowering the, the overall square footage requirement. Yeah, I don't know if there are too many in Canton, but yeah, yeah. Oh, okay. Mm-hmm. We're using your microphone. It is, it feels like 10 o'clock.
We'll go, we'll go through the next little bit quickly. If, if, if you want me to, I can move through the next bit quickly, okay.
Go to the next thing, please.
So, the other thing that was, um, brought up last, uh, last meeting was the homeowner repair maintenance programs and seeing if there was anything that, um, that Canton, uh, could do. So we do have, um, funds that are allocated to Canton through the community development block, block grants, um, from the Department of Urban and Development through HUD. So this is just a breakdown of some of the, the funds that we already get and for housing rehab projects. Now, um, these are based on income, so low to moderate income homeowners can qualify for, for these, um, these grant funds. So, in program year 2022, the township receives, uh, over 300, $300,000, and 32% was allocated for housing rehab, rehab projects. So the maximum per So the maximum per home was $25,000, the maximum per mobile home is $5,000, and this is just a breakdown of some of the projects that were, that were completed with those funds.
That's by area, CDBG, low to moderate, moderate income area?
Yes, for, for the housing, housing rehab funds, yes.
So I guess my point in that, in raising that issue was, what mechanisms can we use, or what can we come up with to incentivize people to invest in their existing homes, to improve them? I don't know that there's any one factor, one thing that came to mind recently about families staying in Canton and, and all that sort of thing, that brought back to why my family and I moved to Canton in the first place. A, a big reason why we moved here was because of the school system. And, and I don't mean, I know it's not a master plan issue, but there are, there are issues with the school district right now. There are, there's a lot of angst from various people about the school system and that sort of thing. Whether that's enough to discourage people from moving to Plymouth Canton or, or not, I don't know if it, I don't know if it's risen to that level yet, but that's kind of a, a subtopic. But getting back to, we have smaller homes in this community that have been around quite some time, were developed in the 60s and early 70s, is that, I think I used the phrase, kind of look rough around the edges and that sort of thing. And it'd be nice if, rather than just kind of forgetting about those areas and developing new McMansions, if there was a way to incentivize people to invest in those homes and improve that housing stock. You know, they're pretty significant neighborhoods, particularly in the eastern half of the township. So, yeah, that, that's something, I don't know that these, these programs can definitely help that. I mean, because I'm sure there are people that meet those criteria, but some don't. And, you know, it might be something to think about for the future. You know, the government, the current administration in the state is all about getting people to stay, stay in Michigan, and that word again, incentivizing business and those sort of things to stay here. If there's, if there was a, again, if there's a tool we could come up with to do that, I think that's something that should be considered.
So I just wanted to highlight, I spoke to the CDBG coordinator in Westland, so they also receive funds through, through HUD that they use. And they had a city rehabilitation program to help rehabilitate the, the homes in the area. It was discontinued about three years ago because they, the properties and had to be in foreclosure, and there's just not any more housing to do it, so, which is kind of a nice, a good, a good problem to have. They also partner with the Wayne Westland School District, and they have trade students that help them construct new homes on vacant city-owned land. They do about one house a year, so they've built 12 so far. I had a really great conversation with, with him, so I'm going to be touring, touring some of those houses in the next couple of weeks, just to get a better idea of, as to what, what they do. So that might be something that we can, we can work on, or we can see how, how they do it, and that might be something that we can try to work with the Plymouth Canton School District to, to start here.
I think Livonia did that, too, because they built some homes around Churchill High School that was, used to be school.
Ann Arbor, too, Ann Arbor's on that.
Yeah, so there's a lot of, there's a lot of questions and a lot of how, how this could work out, but certainly partnering with, with school districts and partnering with any agencies is something that we want to prioritize in our master plan as well. Even if nothing comes of it, it's something that we want to make sure we keep the doors open and communications open with, with our school district.
And everyone should know that we definitely can use the tradespeople. I mean, the training programs are awesome for kids.
Yep, keeps kids involved, keeps them contributing to their community, so it's, it's a bonus and good on all sides. So, and then I just included some information on some state and national programs to help Michigan Home Repair, State Emergency Relief, Habitat for Humanity. So these are some more high-level programs that we can certainly put people in touch with. We, we facilitate the CDBG program here, but the other point that we could do is look for programs that are already in existence at the state and national level, and make sure we try to coordinate, or we try to reach out. If, if the homeowners are having difficulty, then we can provide them information. We're not going to facilitate, we're not going to apply for them, we're not going to do it for them, but we can say, hey, here's, here's a program for you. Now it's, now it's on you to go do. So those are some things that we could, that we could do without zapping, zapping too much staff time. So those were the, that was the information that I wanted to, to provide to you. We're finishing up some of the goals and objectives state, draft statements, so we're hope to have those before you at the next work session in a couple of weeks. Was there anything else related to the housing size, microhousing, or these programs that you wanted to, to discuss in any more detail?
Thanks for doing the work, Aaron.
If anything comes up and you want to talk about it some more, please, please let me know.
Thank you. I put away my agenda already, sorry. Oh, yeah, public comments? Yeah, anyway, do, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
If I may, real quick, before we do that, I just wanted to let you know that I had sent an email about a webinar a couple of weeks ago, and then I have some, another one that's going to be coming to you sometime tomorrow with some more webinars and slides and PowerPoints and things that you can look at for your continuing education.
Thank you. And I started watching that webinar, and I thought it was very interesting, and then I ran out of time, so I was hoping to get it done in time to tell you I was finished with it tonight, but, anyway, very interesting, thank you.
It was pretty interesting given the time.
A little bit dry, yeah. We have a motion to adjourn and support, we have a motion by Commissioner Egenberger in support by Commissioner Watkins to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Didn't.